Let's do it.
Welcome to the council meeting in the city of W Idaho, Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. It is five thirty P M. If you're joining us on Zoom, please meet your microphone, raise your hand if you have a question. Personnel in the office, please meet your phones unless you are emergency personnel. This is time to make our roll call for these.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Member Carrero?
Yes.
Member Shay?
Yes.
Member Mahoney?
Yep.
Member Obenah?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yep.
President Gurdani?
Yes.
Thank you. Notice the agenda compliance for Idaho Code seventy four two oh four. Finally, the three of the meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four two oh four within forty eight hours. Prior to the meeting at the city of Bellevue City Hall post office and on the city's website on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
I move that the notice for the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four regular meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code section seventy four dash two zero four.
Second?
Okay, alright. Thank you. Time two, call for conflict is outlined in Idaho Code seventy four four four. Any conflict with the next agenda?
No.
I mean, a new item that we'll start doing, the mayor and council report. So instead of using up all the comment time, if we have anything that we want to bring up as far as myself or the council. Please, we'll use that time for that. Council, please just give me a brief overview if you have anything that you would like to add to this. But it's basically open comments, so no worries. The biggest thing I have right now is Thursday is coming up. We do have truck retreat and, you know, coming home after work, it's gonna start being getting darker and it's gonna be cold. So watch out for the kiddos, trick or treating out there. Watch your speeds and just make sure everybody has a good safe time. Other than that, we continue forward, waiting on some updates on wastewater plants so we can start getting our final. I guess claims report from ICRIM and see how we can start moving forward there. I'm getting ready to have a couple of meetings on the wastewater project, or sorry, the water project with our legal teams and it's starting to get that rolling forward. But other than that, not much more that's on the agenda right now. Council, anything?
Um, this last Thursday, I walked between ninth and third with County Commissioner Lindsay Malado. And because when during the cleanup, when we were doing helping the families in need, the one thing I saw the most were dumpsters. And when I started talking to people around the neighborhood, I was like, why, like, why the dumpsters? Because they're construction site dumpsters. And they were like, well, it's cheaper. But with that, that means everything's being thrown away, even recyclables, so cardboard, glass, all of those items. So we're looking into what can be provided to Bellevue as an alternative for either recycling center and collaborations and what what could happen. But I didn't want it. Just exploring options to see what could be available for for us before I was gonna bring the whole thing to you guys to do what you would.
Some of the dumpsters are duly needed.
Right. But long term, if everybody goes to dumpster.
Well, it was pretty long term. I block South of mine, North of mine. He for it, he's still pretty ricky, but he cleaned up his yard. They had dumpster out there for a year and a half, three years, four shit and.
Are you talking about Seventh and Oak?
No.
Okay.
Eighth.
Okay, okay.
And and then Seven and Oak, they're another person, but they've.
That's one of the houses.
They cleaned it up. I couldn't believe it. I saw today going, what the heck?
Mm hmm. That's one of the houses.
Thank God.
Mm hmm. Yeah. But long term, because what we've, when talking to people, it's more of like time, working multiple jobs. If they do have kids on weekends, they don't want to spend the time. They would rather spend the time with their kids. So I think things add up and life things happen, health things happen anyway, so that.
I look forward to hearing what you guys come up with.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other council remarks?
Um, I've been doing, continue to do work at the Resort Cities Coalition and hope to bring something to us on your next, with the approval of the mayor on the next agenda to move forward with the Resort Cities local licenses, so.
Very cool.
I'm curious what other towns are doing.
Yeah, I've been actually having great conversations with the other towns.
It seems so confusing. Why can't they have one? It it's, you know, it's it's a, I'm biased.
Yeah.
But, you know, in the meantime, it's a, it's a joke, you know, and.
I think.
It really is. It's a, it's a joke.
I think hopefully whatever we are able to present will have a robust discussion.
I think there's gonna be some lawsuits involved, like I said before.
Yeah, and maybe you and I have a phone call.
Yeah.
Before that.
Yeah.
Great.
Plus, if you want to buy mine, you can.
That could be another phone call.
Alright.
That's my thing. Any others?
No.
Alright. One last thing. So at, at Pizza with Politicians on, was that Monday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday last week?
Mm hmm.
Okay. We did have two members of our board that were on the panel and we had two in viewing the session. But due to what Idaho Code states as open meeting laws, there was no deliberation and there's no discussion. So there was no conflict on open meeting laws with everybody being in attendance. I just wanted to clear that up. It was brought up. It was a good catch, but it states right in the opening verbiage and in the questions, bringing up questions. As long as we're not deliberating or deliberate, making a decision or deliberating to a decision. There is no problem, especially in a public noticed, wasn't noticed, but it was noticed by the newspaper. So we should be good there. At this time, move on to item number four, public comment. Rides of concern not on the agenda. Comments are limited to three to five minutes. Is there any public comment here? None in the gallery here, any online? Seeing none and no hands raised at this time, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Rides of concern. Item number five, consent agenda, action items, approval of claims, approval of payment for clear creek disposal for the Martin Canyon fire incident, approval of amendments, treasuries report, department reports, and request refund for the fire department. Any questions on items eight, you're a.
Uh, not a question, but a comment that I really appreciated the depth of the treasuries report for the preliminary summary year end fiscal year twenty four.
Yeah.
Um, it was incredibly helpful in digesting all of that information and I was really happy and proud to see that we didn't dip into our reserves, basically, as much as had been budgeted. Um, and I was, our carryover is what I meant. And I was just happy to see that and thank you for making that more easily digestible, the breakdown that you provided.
You're welcome. Can I make a comment on my report? The reason I wrote this out the way I did was to help you, when you look at each one of those reports, how to actually read it. So if you have any specific questions, but that's, if you'll take this and you pull out your general findings and go, okay, there's where I see. There's a development impact we've used. There's, you know, the net income, you know, what were our expenses? There are a couple of things that that skew some of the numbers that are explained in here simply because of reversibles for P and Z. So you'll see that there were the, a negative figure that had to be added back into, you know, to offset. So if you see little discrepancies, chances are it's explained within my report. I'm happy to go through each section with you if you would like, or if you felt that just helped explain it in terms of reading the report. I am going to do a more more report before the audit. There will, I just wanted to preliminarily give you this.
I thought it was very wonderful, you know? It's a gift.
You're the negative comment. Two, the challenge for doing that. I've seen quite a few of those and it's awesome to know where we ended up at the end of the year. There's been many years where we didn't know. But on my, the overhead door, I did try to get two other bids and with no luck. People got repaired the door. They had over a month to give me a bid. Never did, just to throw that out there. And what they did to repair it kind of made it worse, I think. And I don't think it lasts a winter. That's why I kind of brushed it in there pretty much.
So I just wanted to comment that I feel like everybody, all the departments, everybody kind of came together this year. And I think in the end, it really our bottom line is better than I expected at this point. So I hope to have good news from the auditor when we're finished with all this. Also, as part of my treasurer's report, it's not in here, but Cassell, we are moving forward very quickly. I've talked to three, three people in the last three days. And all of a sudden, they have hit the the no button. So we are moving. I expect that we're gonna be functioning in the first part of twenty twenty five.
Ah, that's cool.
So, yeah.
That's big.
Yeah.
Surely, were there any big concerns or red flags?
In here?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Anything in particularly like you're like, we crushed it?
I think general fun, we crushed it.
Nice.
Um, I think we did much better. Everybody came in a little less than what was budgeted, which helped out. You know, where where payroll went heavy here, it went live here. It just, that's why my comment, I'm coming together. I I feel like we just really worked together. We we did a good job in keeping the numbers where they really needed to be, so.
Yeah. Clear it that way. Nice work, everybody.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Can I jump around more quick on this and just ask, maybe the fire chief and the mayor, does Clear Creek have anything in place for emergency service discounts? I commend what you did to kind of respond quickly. I was just wondering if they have ever had anything in place for setting up in an emergency situation.
No, but you have to real deal them.
Got it. Okay.
Everything is.
Just with the way fires have been going and fire response.
So I originally reached out to Chris Corin with the county emergency manager to see if he could get us, then we'd go through them. This hadn't come up before. And so Clear Creek was actually closed on Saturday. I was able to get the owner's number. He had a crew come in and they set us up, so. You know, it was just trying to take care of the firefighters, make sure they had a station area. B L M, we were debating if they were gonna take it or if we were gonna take the run of it. Given the fact that it was protecting, it was coming pretty close to our spring source and communities just north of us, or not north, I guess west of us, just outside of the city limits. I felt that was justified, but since the funds were there to protect the spring source primarily, I think we can pull it out of water instead of general guns. And I don't see it being an issue.
I definitely support the effort. I was just wondering if they ever, if there was a leg of Clear Creek that has something like that, but it sounds like that's a nonstarter at this time, but maybe.
You have to know what they're saying.
As we, as we move forward this next year, we reassess our emergency management plan as part of our source water protection plan and our wastewater facility plan. We'll make some coordinations in there because there's some holes in there missing on, you know, which electricians do we contact now, which plumbers, which, you know, this. And this would be one to have a number on call, especially on a Sunday or Saturday if something major came up and they're not carrying all the business days.
Great, thank you.
They've helped us out in the past with floods, with portable bodies, that kind of thing. You know, they stepped it up. Actually, the sheriff got the bill for that one because he wouldn't let me evacuate the trailer park. And he's the we can evacuate. The marshal or I has to be the sheriff, boy and kid. So it's learning. Experience. Police, I haven't filled out. This was a little different.
Yeah.
But the, the, come in any time and help us out.
So for the, for the, so just clarification, just a quick question on that, the, when the fire happened that morning, it was then Lynn County Sheriff's job to then notify our community that there was a fire. Then if they're in charge of evacuations, right?
Yeah, but he's, he's involved in maybe levels of evacuation. When we went to that call, there was no threat at that moment, you know, so we assessed. But if it was, we would coordinate it through the sheriff.
Got it. Okay.
Including blood. I have no, she went through it a couple of times, but.
State statute, only person that can order evacuations is the standing county sheriff.
Okay.
But also remember that the county sheriff will not always be the we call it the chief operator, chief, they won't be in charge of the operation, in charge of the E O C. They're a part of the community service.
Okay.
And so whoever takes charge of the E O C is the one that's gonna be delegating to the public news releases, to the cities and to the community residents. We take our information from them and try to match it up as best we can. We add anything else that is permanent to our community and we go from there. So while the sheriff is up on for evacuations, we still have our own economy and a lot of it, but it's working with the E O C. And you want you to go to the local emergency planning meetings monthly? Are they still doing them? I know they kind of died out a little.
It's a lot more quarterly than. I still attend once in a while virtually, but I can't because of my other job. So they have them virtual, so I am once in a while. But I talk with Chris Corin, you know, a weekly basis.
Yeah.
Is there an ongoing investigation? I mean, do we know the source of the fire or?
I'm not privileged to speak of a ongoing investigation at this time.
Be all of them. It was a little bit, yeah. They came and investigated that fire. Good luck. Try to do anything I might.
Just curious.
You can guess.
Anybody can all guess. So let's get back on track. Any other items eight to your left?
I was excited to see a community development report, so yay.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Member Obenah?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
President Gurdani?
Yes.
Member Ferrero?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Member Mahoney?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to public carrying action item, text amendment for title ten zoning regulation, chapter seven, business district. Amendment language to subsection ten dash seven dash one, purpose. Section ten dash seven dash two, permit usage, section ten dash seven dash three, accessory uses, section ten dash seven dash four, conditional uses, ten dash seven dash five. Dimensional, building cover your standard requirements and add two sub additional sections, ten dash seven dash six, specific district standards and ten dash seven dash seven, designer use required.
Brian, you want to take us off? Alright, yes. Mayor Johnson, Brian Park, the county director. Uh, yeah, so this application has been in the works for a good long while now and has seen several different variations on it, starting approximately twenty twenty one. A staff initiated a text amendment to permit construction multi-family housing in the, or the business zone. Then in twenty twenty three, a developer submitted a separate text amendment with a similar goal, a different language. Really permit or stability development of a single parcel. And then the staff planning consultants at the time met with planning zoning commission and determined that the best course forward was to smash these two things together and come up with a single code amendment to bring to the council, which so you guys in July twenty twenty four. Then I believe September as well, at which point you continued to this meeting. Based on what I've seen in my research, one, it's not a great practice to amend the entire text of the zoning or zones language to facilitate the development of a single parcel. Two, I also just think that there needs to be a little more work and thought put into the code in general. And so as a result, and I've discussed this with the applicant who was here tonight. My recommendation is a very friendly denial of the application as written. And then to, I will start working on a stat initiate text amendment to amend the planning development standards, which is really more where these kind of one up, hey, I have an interesting idea for a project. It doesn't quite fit in zoning code as normal. But I think if you go to the community, that's where that type of project should be reviewed more typically. And so I'll work on text amendments, we start a quick to facilitate that as a review process rather than just mending the entire business zone code. Which point the developer would be up, welcome to come back with a proposal for your consideration at a later date. And then the next part of the request is to give me some direction on the scope and style of work sessions, public outreach, et cetera, on a broader but still fairly focused text amendment project to work on. Whether that be in business zone generally, housing generally, something else. All of these things are interconnected and woven and cities are an ecosystem and so they're all gonna talk to each other to a certain extent, but I would like to have some focus and direction, make sure that we're keeping within the scope. With that, I will say, any questions?
Um, any questions right now or do you want to open a public comment?
I would just say I kind of liked that idea of a direction. It seemed like it kind of solved some problems that we kept running against and into and thus not approving anything, so.
I'm sorry, there's no public comment.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it, Brian. I would kick this around. This is one of the troubles with having a change over so quickly with the mayor and council members in two-year terms and stuff. Somebody brings something up and and now it's a completely different animal than it was four years ago. So I appreciate you reviewing it. This was half the reason I wanted to wait and make a decision on it was for you to have a look at it because I think you're on the same page as all of us. So we just want to make sure we get it right. It is adaptable for future uses, future needs, and it meets the community intent. And, you know, we have put some money in this already. It's unfortunate, but we'll continue to come up with the best plan. It's, it's better to come up with a good plan, a better plan than trying to rush something that doesn't meet the needs or can affect something that we may not be aware of right now. And so, you know, I apologize with the delays with your projects. It's not our intent, but we want to get this right.
Um, thank you, Brian. I appreciate the breakdown and the conversation around kind of a path forward that seems relevant for now and for particular projects. Something I want to bring up, which is what I had brought up back when this whole document was originally presented. Kind of looking at your requests for goals, the line item A, specific topics to focus on. Something I think would be important is to review the business district zone and potentially consider differentiating the highway business district zone and the downtown historic business district zone. And looking at how those zone standards apply to the types of businesses that are in each of those kind of regions of the zone. I don't know if that needs to be something that would predate looking at permitting multifamily town home residential units in the business zone or whatever you kind of think that order of operations should be. And then also making sure that with everything that's happening that we remind, we let you know, I feel that continue to go down the path of the affordable housing valleywide problem and also city specific problem. And kind of addressing that as its separate issue, but also how does it play into the zoning that we're looking at. And just saying that I think that's still an important path to have staff go down. And then my opinion for work sessions would be, I would love to see a little bit more communication between the council and planning and zoning. I know you've alluded to some, how some of that work might happen, but I think maybe at least an initial work session so that there's no offense if council is kicking something back and there's no kind of disrespect or miscommunication that's interpreted. Just kind of understand what everybody's goals and ideas for the projects are moving forward. So that would be one of my recommendations for the style of path forward. So, thank you.
Alright, has been brought up and we have been talking with the P and Z commissioner, county chairman and trying to figure out how we can do a joint workshop just to get everybody kind of talking about where we're all at and making sure that, you know, we still have the same basic goals for the community. But this comes up to our next big project that will become up here in the next year is starting to redo the complaint and getting a board and seeing where the complaint will lead us.
Yeah, Brian, I really appreciate this just detailed analysis and like just reading through the whole thing. Yes, 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 thank you, thank you. But the thing, like, what's really impactful for me is like when we talk about affordable housing and focusing on that. And I know just based on Idaho laws, you can only get affordable housing only certain ways, right? So coming up with something creative. And I, yeah, and I understand what President Gurdani is saying, like that affordable housing is separate and the business zone is separate, but part of the zone and just reviewing just, yeah, the purpose and intent that's in the the business zone. To me, yeah, it's just really important to that it stays a business zone and not a mixed business zone with, you know, something that's, you know, more, I don't know, inclusive, vibrant, community based, but I know with workshops, you can get in there, but yeah, I understand that's separate, right? So housing is one workshop and business zone zoning is another workshop. Is that typically how it would go?
Mayor Johnson, Oliver Obernoff, what I'm asking for is a overall, I guess, theme of the code amendment or the text amendment of this project. Whether that's the housing or business or something else. The work session will kind of dive into the smaller details on that.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
I do want to remind people too, and online and in the notes, that we do have housing on Main Street. There are apartments. There are people living on Main Street. So this isn't like we're changing mainstream zoning. This isn't a zoning change. This is code and coming up with ways, you know, it's a tax amendment. It's not a complete zone change here. So just be aware, we do have housing. It is mixed use in certain areas. It's not a very big change, but we just need to make sure it works, find ways that we can get it so interested parties can bring in new structures, new opportunities for our community and for Main Street.
And I, I also think that uh, Second Avenue, Second Street back here, I believe, is mixed business.
Light business, I think.
Light business?
Light, limited.
Limited, sorry.
And, and I, I.
And, and I, I I think that maybe that needs to be revisited, whether it's all of this or in a separate separate set of hearings, but I think there, there are some issues with uses both permitted and conditional in, in those zones and the fact that we have the bike path that runs, that bisects second avenue makes parking and kind of high intense uses tricky in that zone. So I, I am in support of what I'm hearing from other council members. I think it's a good idea. I, I like the joint work session idea, how it comes about is a different story, but I think that, that P and Z has done a lot of work that they felt like was really valuable. And I just want to make sure that they, they understand that their, their work and their comments are valued.
Seems like the business district zoning standards are what we need to focus on.
Thank you, all.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's get together and have some fun. I think it's important to be, work together with P and Z. Because I think
Seems like it'd be very difficult.
We have different folks too, but you know, five years ago, we're pretty much in tune. But you would think in the last couple of years, we've been, we've been out of touch with each other. It's time to come together.
No, that's where Brian's going to come in and be huge is we just haven't had that in-house direct liaison between the two boards. And so I think Brian will bring them back together and we can get back focused on what's actually relevant and what needs to be addressed. So business and what do you want to say about housing and mixed use?
I just think it's, it's still important. I, I would say that that's a priority as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a work session.
There's a lot of priorities.
Those are my two callouts, which is business and general housing with the caveat of affordable housing.
What else do you need, Brian?
I think we need a motion to actually deny the text amendment as written. Believe that, probably.
I would make that motion to deny the text amendment as written. Second?
Member Lady?
Yes.
Member Ferero?
Yes.
Member Obenah?
Yes.
Member Mahoney?
Yes.
Member Shay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to old business item seven, consideration approval of resolution 2394, resolution of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, authorizing the mayor to establish an agreement with planner and you and inspection services with the Idaho Division of Occupational and Professional, Professional, Professional Licenses. So we had one company come in and kind of give us their overview, what they can do for us. We talked to Brian and he's feels that right now, sticking with DOPL is our best move forward. Haley's done the city review. They're sticking with DOPL for now. We're still waiting for the final verbiage of the DOPL contract, but that should be coming out anytime. And the amendments that they have made are in our favor. So it's a better contract for us overall. And anytime when I have to with their services, we can reassess them, move forward with another company if needed.
And this was better cost or service or both?
Mayor Johnson, Oliver Ling, the we don't know at this point. The, the short answer is if we don't sign the contract, we lose building professional services the first. We don't want to do that.
Back to kind of that original.
So we will keep investigating if we don't pack.
We need to keep this. Okay, perfect.
I appreciate the coverage. So there's no lapse in service. I did, I did enjoy the presentation, a little bit of the modernization and the technology and the integration. I think there's a lot there, but I look forward to you diving into it more and making the determination of what's the most cost effective. But I did think some of their presentation had some shiny moments to, that sounded.
It was polished.
Yeah, sounded pretty great, but you never want to go without coverage. So I appreciate this.
Going to get a motion.
I'm happy to. Move that we adopt resolution 2494, authorizing the mayor to enter into on behalf of the city of Bellevue, plan, review and inspection services agreement with the Idaho Division of Occupational and Professional Licenses and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Member Shay?
Yes.
Member Mahoney?
Yes.
Member Obenah?
Yeah.
President Gurdani?
Yes.
Member Ferero?
Yes.
Member Lady?
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll go into executive session pursuant to Idaho code 742061, section F. Communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but inherently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel on executive session does not satisfy this requirement.
Would you need me to mention?
No, I need a motion. I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
I would move to going to executive session pursuant to Idaho code 742061.
Second. Is there a shot? Yeah. All in favor?
Yes.
Well, we need a roll call. Roll call.
Ferero?
Yes.
Member Lady?
Yeah.
President Gurdani?
Yes.
Member Obenah?
Yes.
Member Mahoney?
Do you guys?
I think you can stay.
Okay.
Sean or John, can you call Christine?
Sure.
All right. We have exited executive session and we did have one other agenda item come on, but it was not noticed in time for this meeting. It'll be on next month. So we are done tonight. Unless there are any questions?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Oh, now I have to go on my story.